Second.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call and the public announcement will be done as the class begins. Moving on, then, we will start with public discussion. During the course of the board meeting, Rockaway Town Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Rockaway Town Public Schools. The board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address and to limit their concerns to items listed on the agenda and/or items in reference to the operation of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. Our comments will be considered and are responsible before the coming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments and right to legal rights of those affected identified in their comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. So, good evening, thank you for coming, and at this time, may I have a motion please to open it to the public?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Selberg. Anyone from the public wish to address the board? May I have a motion please to close to the public?
So moved.
Mrs. Cherico?
Second.
And Mrs. Helberg?
Oh, sorry.
Moving on then to community, thank you. Moving on to communications. Any additional communications?
Yes, we received a message from Mr. Kirland regarding the access of emails on the website.
Thank you very much, and please reply to it. Moving on then to approve the minutes. May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Mrs. Smith, and secondly, Mrs. Messick, I'll pick you that one. Okay, more discussion please. On the minutes. February 6th. There being none, roll call please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes.
Moving on to superintendent's board.
Thank you. Good evening. As the board and the community is aware, we have been engaged since the beginning of our school year in a thoughtful examination of both our district policies and practices. This examination is informed through critically important input, including but not limited to our parent community forums, feedback from our staff, legal advisory and best practice research, literature, and exposure to practices in surrounding school districts. A number of policies that are on the agenda tonight are reflective of the ongoing work that is occurring in this area. I'd also like to highlight two important areas of practice that have been reviewed and revised in light of our commitment to student support through positive action. Ongoing and consistent student attendance at school has been shown to have a real bearing on future outcomes. Research shows that missing 10% of the school year or about 18 days of the school year negatively affects a student's academic performance. That boils down to just two days a month, and it's known as chronic absence. Many school districts don't look at all the right data to improve school attendance. They track how many students show up every day and how many are skipping school without an excuse, but not how many are missing so many days in excused and unexcused absence that they are heading off track academically. Informed by a federal project known as Attendance Works, our schools this year have engaged in proactive examinations of student attendance with the idea of getting out ahead of potential cases of chronic absenteeism. Our approach is collaborative, meeting with parents to put cooperative strategies in place that are likely to help a student be in school on a more regular basis. Our attendance letters have been revised in an effort to reflect partnership and not negative or punitive tone. And we expect that our process will continue to evolve as we engage in this very important effort. A second area of focus is centered around our district code of conduct. Inspired by our work in the area of character education, our leadership team has drafted a revised code of conduct that is centered around our core values of honesty, empathy, acceptance, respect, and trust. Violations have been framed in a rubric form with the concept of responding to a student behavior in a graduated manner and with a concerted effort to emphasize remedial actions in concert with required consequences. It is our intention to begin the new 2019-2020 school year with this code in place. However, elements of that approach are already being utilized by our school leaders. I would also like to provide a progress report to the board and to the community in regard to our search for a new director of special education. The district was pleased to receive approximately 40 applications for this position. And from those applications, only individuals with bona fide prior experience were selected for an initial pool to meet with our central office team. From there, individuals engaged in a full interview with a stakeholder group that was represented by parents and school staff. Interview questions and activities were constructed according to the themes that were provided to us through parent and staff surveys and parent and staff meetings. It is my intent to recommend a final candidate to the board at our March 6th board meeting to capably and effectively build this important leadership position. And I extend my sincere thanks to all who have engaged with us in the identification of those attributes that should be most present in the new director. And that completes my report.
Any questions? Mrs. Administrator?
Good evening. The business office is in full swing with the development of 2019-2020 school budget. The board will be holding their first work session to discuss the budget decision. The public is welcome to observe the board as they begin their review. The meeting will be held here in Copeland after the regular meeting the board has concluded. For those of you that have not heard, our superintendent, Dr. McLaughlin, was interviewed by Channel 4 News concerning the bus arm cameras that are in the process of purchasing. This segment aired on Friday, February 15th. We expect to take delivery of these cameras in the next several weeks and have them installed shortly thereafter. A report on revenue generated by our transportation department shows stocks between $158,000 for the school year today. As of this writing, the only building that has not been cut over to the new homes is the administrative building. We are hoping to have this cut over shortly and be able to close out this project. The HIBC project is stony works in its final stages of completion, and the window installation will begin in early spring. We are in the process of planning to purchase and install master clocks in all buildings. It will be installed in all six schools, and then the work will be done on the second shift after the students have left the deck. We anticipate this project will be completed by the end of this school year.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Carlo?
Yeah, just regarding $158,000 for the revenue that happened to pay our bus drivers?
Okay. So that's additional revenue that comes in from doing field trips and repairing buses from the district, so it's not the net, just additional.
Okay.
Good evening. I would like to begin my report this evening by highlighting the German 7 and German 8 curriculum on our agenda for adoption tonight. This adoption ensures the successful expansion of our German program at Copeland Middle School. At the end of 8th grade, students will be administered the high school German 1 exam. The students that pass this exam will be allowed to enroll in German 2 when they enter high school. This 7th and 8th grade German grade curricula was modeled after the high school German 1 curriculum with a focus on German culture. For example, one area the final 8th grade unit explores are the similarities and differences between the United States and German culture when it comes to expectations we have of teenagers to help maintain the home. The overall goal of this curricula is to build understandings about cultural difference between the two countries so they may be celebrated and embraced. Also on our agenda this evening is the adoption of a more robust identification process and criteria for our gifted and talented services. In creating this new criteria, we felt it was important to implement a second round of universal screening for all students. With this adoption, we will screen all students for giftedness at the end of 2nd grade and again at the end of 5th grade. For both screenings, we will use the COGAT online assessment, which will provide us with national norms from which to align cut scores which are outlined in the overall new approach. Also of note, our new process adopts a multiple pathways approach for students to demonstrate giftedness and relies on both qualitative and quantitative data points to make a determination about giftedness. Lastly, we establish a criteria that outlines how we determine if students should continue to receive GNT services from one year to the next. We also include a clearly outlined appeal process to ensure we resolve any areas where there may be disagreement in a highly collaborative and transparent manner. Shifting gears, two Fridays ago, we conducted additional in-service professional development for our teachers and staff across the district. At the elementary level, our grade groups met to review a sample of the 3rd grade UBD template and provided feedback about their classroom libraries. Here at Copeland, teachers collaborate across grades and content areas to co-plan differentiated lessons. Feedback continues to be positive and upbeat about the increased collaboration. At the same time, we are receiving great questions about new curriculum initiatives and feedback about where people still have concerns. These questions and feedback will continue to inform our future planning. Lastly, we hosted a 4th grade family science night two weeks ago here at Copeland. Over 20 families were in attendance, and their feedback surveys were unanimously very positive about the experience. I'd like to thank Vanessa Waxman and Gina Parisi for planning and facilitating this wonderful event. We are now in the process of putting together a plan for how we can run more events like this in the future. And that concludes my report. Yes, thank you. Another resolution that's on the agenda tonight is the board's commitment towards the future-ready process. It's a certification process that's run by the Department of Education. And by putting forth this resolution this evening, as a district, we're committing to put together first a district-level team to help begin the process of ensuring our schools move towards earning these three levels of certification, and then we'll have a committee at each school as well. The three levels are bronze, silver, and gold. And it's important to know on the front end of the process that, once we begin these reviews, you don't just jump to gold. So we know each year as we go through the process, the first achievement will be bronze, then silver, and then gold. The goal being that, over the next several years, all of our schools will move in the appropriate way towards ensuring that they've achieved that certification to demonstrate that they're future-ready, which would mean that they're appropriately integrating technology with instruction, they're being provided appropriate support in terms of technology, and ongoing professional development. So it's a process that will be multi-year and be highly collaborative.
Wonderful article, and I've had a chance in this month's school year about Mars playing a part in the process, so I really encourage you. That gave me a much better grasp of all the necessary steps to go through, so excellent. And then, Mrs. Smith, do you have a question?
I do, I have a few questions. Are we currently implementing the TRES program or some sort of GT program at the elementary levels in grades 3 through 5?
We are, we're currently not implementing the TRES program. Earlier this school year, academic year, we adopted a new program, a new curriculum for all of our GNT services that we refer to as GATE. And so that's been implemented in September in grades 3 through 8, and consultative services when necessary in grades 1 and 2.
And then, if so, what is the current criteria that we were using to identify students for this year?
The current criteria was the use of the COGAT. And prior to this new approach that we're looking forward to adopting tonight, we administered the COGAT beginning of the 3rd grade year. That did happen this year, and end of September, early October. And that's the criteria that's used to determine if students are eligible for GNT services this current school year.
And then, when did the parents receive the results of that, or when will they?
Upon their personal request. So as a district, we won't universally provide those results, but parents are certainly welcome to make those requests of the individual school.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just had another comment about the science night. I was fortunate enough to be able to come with my son, and it was a fabulous night. Lots of education, laughs, and so well-planned out with Waxman and Parisi did a wonderful job. And I really hope we can get more of these in the future.
We're committed to at least three before the end of the school year. And then, my vision is to hope to come forward in September with a plan for the entire year so people can know what will happen on our calendars. We'll avoid conflicts like I know have come up more recently going forward.
I was on for, I mean, it needed to be a small group, but unfortunate it was limited to around people, but it was a great night.
Sold out. I got very worried, all of a sudden, sold out. Thank you. Moving on then to committee reports. Education, I'm next, Chereko? Can you hear me? Associate? Okay, all right, this is too far away for I guess. We have three resolutions on the agenda that went through a committee last week, I guess we were there. The future ready, gifted and talented, the new criteria, and the German 7 and 8 curriculum. Mr. Traver spoke about the future ready, pretty much, it's very exciting. Like, when he was going through the whole process, it was very exciting to hear. And it's a voluntary program, so like, we're like jumping on the band right in here and really pushing ourselves, and I really like that. The two parts of the program is our commitment tonight, and then, as we spoke about before, you know, there are other pieces that we go through, but this is the first step for us. Mrs. McQuaid, Mrs. Thomas wrote the GNT new criteria. Mrs. McQuaid came in to show us the curriculum and talk about the new comprehensive approach. The testing is important, it incorporates the identification process. Its qualitative measures are also in place also. So it's not just testing, there's other pieces to the puzzle. Students that are ELL and twice gifted are also considered for the program. Student eligibility, we visited adequately for those in the program, and students are given more opportunities to enter the program, respecting changing of development and student readiness, which I felt was a very nice change. And I'm probably going to say her last name incorrectly because I don't speak German, so I'm going to apologize ahead of time. Frau McLaughlin. I'm saying the right, McLuff. McLuff, McLuff. She came in to present the German 7 and 8, 8th grade curriculum. Like, spoke about before, she was, one of the most exciting parts I found was about this curriculum. It's not just about the language, it's about the culture. And that hits home for the kids, they can really embrace that part of it. It's a very rich curriculum. And I spoke to Frau regarding reaching out to our own German resource in our town, Germania Park. We've already started making those connections so the kids can really enrich their experience. I know my daughter personally, after taking German and then going to that, it was like, this was great. The German music, the German food, dancing, you know, the whole piece together, so looking forward to that. It almost made me want to take German. We can go to Germania Park. I had to learn my foreign language, so I've been driving through. Yes, starting today. And the other committee reports, operations.
We had our operations committee on December, sorry, December. It's been a long couple of weeks. February 6th, operations consist of finance, technology, transportation, buildings and grounds, and I think that's it, right? Security. So that's what operations encompasses all the time, but our particular last meeting, we talked about the budget. So needs, wants, additions, things like that, how can we cram it all in? Mrs. DeCarlo has done a fantastic job of presenting us with our budget books. Everyone should have gotten them. And tonight is our first work session. Our next meeting is actually next Thursday, the 7th, at 5:30. Budget meeting.
Budget meeting.
Operations.
Operations.
Operations. Budget is the 14th.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Any other committees?
We will be having a committee, negotiations committee while we'll be beginning negotiations with our bus riders. Probably sometime in early April at this point, we're just trying to establish a date. So that would be Mrs. Cherico, Mrs. Shields, and myself. Well, you have one thing about policy, we'll go over the policies later. We discussed having a policy meeting, March 12th. Do we have a line for that? 6:00?
6:00.
6:00 P.M.?
Thank you.
And I also have some information from CPAC, the recent CPAC meeting. Dr. McLaughlin had presented a little bit about rest stops and had elicited feedback from parents regarding rest stops. In addition, he had shared some of the qualifications and characteristics that the district was looking for in a new director of special services. And then, we also had Ms. Sharon Cohen present on the IEP process.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll add then to recommend board action. We'll start with personnel, beginning on page 4, ending on page 6. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Cherico?
Mrs. Brooks.
I do need to read in two additional items. They would be numbers 19 and 20, which would be on page 6. Number 19, Superintendent of Schools recommends actions on the following personnel. Number 19, termination. Approve the termination of employment for employee number 5581, effective February 21st, 2019. That will be number 19. Number 20, resignation. Approve the resignation of Maria Martinez, a full-time English second language teacher at Catherine A. Dwyer School, effective April 29th, 2019. So tonight, we're voting on 20 items under personnel. There'll be no public discussion by law, amendment discussion in executive, so I'm thinking. May I please have a roll call? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes.
Moving on to HIV determination, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Shields?
Second.
Mrs. Brooks?
This evening, we have the approval of number 24, HIV determination, which was explained in our last board meeting. Tonight, we had no new HIVs to review in executive session.
Okay, so the vote will be to affirm place number 24. May I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes.
Motion passes, moving on to education, beginning on page 6, ending on page 7. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks, Mrs. Cherico. Board discussion?
I just want to say to the German curriculum, I read through it, and that's American, German, American. I was very excited about it.
Do you want to take the course too with me? That's probably in the curriculum, sure, that's culture. Now I can open it up to the public and if anyone has a comment about education section. If not, roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes.
Motion passes, going on to page 8. Under special education, there is none this evening, so we can move on to administration, which begins on page 8 and it ends on page 9. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Cherico? Board discussion? I have a question. For the grant, is that for a specific project?
Yes, there's two separate specific projects. One is funding, a $500 grant that funds implementation of a Lego STEAM project at Catherine A. Dwyer. And the other is to support our Character Ed Committee think-tank work across the district. That's $500 as well for them to, for supplies and materials.
That's great. I'm happy to donate lots of Legos, it's my pleasure. Any other comments or questions for the board? If not, I can open up to the public. Not, roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes.
Moving on, motion passes, moving on to finance, beginning on page 9, ending on page 10. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Smith? Board discussion? Yes. I signed off on the purchase orders as board member last Tuesday, and I do represent the board includes all of them. And I want to thank Mrs. DeCarlo again for any questions that I have. I'm always looking at the information and getting the answers for people. Any other questions? Comments? We do, yeah, we had one, we had a preliminary report that we approved preliminarily, but we were missing, we were missing some of the documentation because it was the state that was holding us up, it wasn't just our district. So this is the official, the official approval. This is from? When he was here in the fall, correct?
Thank you.
I can open up to the public if anyone has a question for the public in finance. If not, roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes.
Motion passes, moving on to policy. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Cherico?
Mrs. Shields.
On the agenda for this evening, we have several policies. Some of these came directly from the policy alert. Policy 2422, Health and Mental Education. This is a mandated policy. Has been revised to reflect the following changes. Corporate Content Standards, or CCCS, has been changed to reflect New Jersey Student Learning Standards, or NJSLS. Revised policy removes details under each statutory requirement as these details are included in NJSLS, which are incorporated by reference.
Would be a question on that? I have a few I'll present, you want I'd go one by one then? No, a little more. Okay. So on, on two more, two two? Yes. I have a few of them. I'm on page 1, under Rest Self-Examination. Offering instruction on Rest Self-Examination for students in grades 7 through 12. I believe it should be 7 through 8 because we don't have it at 12. So that's just a minor, just a minor thing. When I go to number 4, the development of a school program on cancer awareness by the Commissioner of Education, who was that going to be taught to? Are we talking kindergarten, are we talking 7th and 8th? Where does that begin? Just a question, I don't know the answer, I'm just throwing out questions.
May I have a call? Oh, yes.
Sure.
So, no, we appreciate the question, um, we've been able, we, in our health curriculum, which was recently rewritten this past year, or several months ago, we explicitly do call out, um, areas where we're talking about different diseases at different levels of grade. It starts in grade three. Um, over the course of grade three, there are two separate, two-week units focused on diseases, and at the, the curriculum spirals upward and becomes more robust, if you would, through the middle school. Uh, but there's a consistent touch point, um, one of them being the, on disease and cancer and prevention, um, throughout the spiraling of the health curriculum.
Okay, so that's beginning grade three. Um, getting, going on to number five, dating violence education, it's talking seven through twelve, should be seven through eight. Um, number six, uh, domestic violence education allows instruction on problems, are we, are we addressing that in our curriculum?
Grade eight, yes, we're explicitly calling that out, um, in our health curriculum. Um, and want to also call out for the entire community, um, uh, that we've recently, with the launching of our new website, our curriculum has always been on our website, but with the new website, um, the curriculum docs are up there and I think even more easily accessible. So encourage people, um, to, to review them, uh, with questions like this, it's really helpful.
Thank you. Gang violence prevention, I'm assuming that would be, I'm not sure, I'm sure that doesn't start in kindergarten, but it.
Not kindergarten, uh, but one of the other revisions we made to the health curriculum this past year was to expand, um, our violence prevention, our substance abuse curriculum through adoption of LEED. So LEED is now fully integrated, is starting in grade five, all the way up through, up into, including grading.
I'm wondering if, I don't know if there's a reg to this, I apologize, but I'm wondering if there's not, if we can specify as to different areas, or you don't want to back into that, right?
I would prefer not to, I think if it's in our curriculum. I think, I, if the, I would see the, in most cases, a reg is helpful, but in this case, it's directly related to a curriculum. So my, my apprehension would be that if curriculum was shifted, that the reg would then become outdated. Policy drives reg, but curriculum doesn't usually drive reg, so I can see where there could be a mismatch if we had that. I think if there's policy, and this is specific policy, we know where to go and look for it, it's in curriculum. So I, my preference would be not to get granular in a reg, but to leave it in curriculum.
I'm fine with no reg, I just, I know sometimes grades are being designated and sometimes they're not, so I'm just trying to look for consistency. Uh, the, uh, next one, health, safety, and physical education, all students in grades one through twelve at least have two and one-half hours, so I know that we addressed that in our, going forward through edu, I know that in the education committee. Um, the, I turn, now on page eight, oh, sorry, page four, I believe, of the policy. I'm a little confused in the wording in number ten, Lyme disease prevention through, okay, Lyme disease prevention requires the development of Lyme disease curriculum guidelines and training to all teaching staff members who instruct students with Lyme disease. What does that mean?
I can say that one addition we made to our safe schools training, uh, requirements for staff, uh, which aligns with the New Jersey's, uh, new requirements for, for this training, was to incorporate that into the required annual mandatory training. So that staff are, uh, taking those online trainings as needed to demonstrate their knowledge of Lyme, of Lyme disease. In terms of the specific implementation with our curriculum, I know those disease units start in grade three, I don't know that how detailed yet we are at calling out Lyme disease, if that's the question, I might not be getting at your question.
Yeah, but I think that word with, that you probably, that word to work with perhaps, or we want to say is training to all teaching staff members who instruct students regarding Lyme disease.
Yeah, because how do you know who have, you know, I just didn't know if there were, no, that, thank you, that's exactly what my, you're reading my mind, I don't know. Um, so that can be changed, thank you. Number eleven, it's, that's, it designates grades nine through twelve, so I think you could delete that completely by law, we don't have to deal with word indomation. Moving on to, um, I guess, page five, sexual assault prevention requires the development of a sexual assault prevention education program for utilization by school districts. Again, I'm going to ask, I'm sure in the new health curriculum, you, your sense that is being addressed, where, where does that start, what grade?
It'd be, it's most prevalent in grade eight. Um, there are, uh, awareness around healthy relationships as early as grades four and five. But the shift to more explicit instruction around violence and naming certain things, uh, as inappropriate, um, is more to the sixth, seventh, eighth grade.
Okay. Um, and along with that, the next one is abstinence, stressing abstinence, is that more like if, you're talking eighth grade again?
We are, through the family, the family, uh, family life units, which do begin in fourth grade, but the abstinence piece becomes much more explicit in the middle school and seventh and eighth grade, where we are very explicit in the instruction around it's being the only one hundred percent, um, the, for safe men.
Okay, moving over to page six of eight, CPR, which is designated to high schools and charter schools, so we can delete number fifteen completely, because that doesn't pertain to us. I only have. Correct? I mean, we happen to have them, but that by law doesn't pertain to us. Subventions, high school. Um, finally, um, on page seven of eight, and I believe it's a, it's a section that's been added, starting with an in accordance with the last paragraph, on page seven. I'm wondering if, when you get together as a policy committee, if you could break that maybe into two, it's a lot of information and you, you're, I think people would miss some of the main ideas, so I think it would be helpful if you look at that. Um, and I only have one other question. I'm just curious, who teach, now you said that, um, yeah, we teach breast, you said this, right, who teaches that in our district?
So I appreciate this question, um, currently, um, it's part of our health curriculum that is taught in a co-ed setting, um, that is taught from the perspective of awareness and is informative. We're currently exploring, partly as a result of this question, uh, ways that this shouldn't be taught more in a single-sex environment and through our nurses. And so we're going to be moving towards that as we look to the next school year.
Thank you, that was my concern. That's it for me, sorry I took so long, but. What else?
The second policy that we have on here is policy two-four-three-one, point three, practices preseason heat accumulation for school-sponsored athletics and extracurricular activities. This is just a recommended policy at this point, and while it does not pertain to what's right now, because we are not doing warm weather activities, um, the policy will work out because. Uh, the New Jersey State Skinner's Classic Athletic Association recently published a revised version of the recommended preseason heat accumulation guidelines, which school districts for the purpose of minimizing injury, enhancing the players' health, performance, and wellbeing. It's recommended districts apply these guidelines for all school-sponsored athletic programs and extracurricular activities during warm weather. We selected the second option, um, that requires the implementation of the N J S I A A recommended procedures for all school-sponsored athletic programs and extracurricular activities during warm weather months. These will extend the procedures to all school-sponsored athletic programs and extracurricular activities during warm weather, which also explains revision to the policy title. Um, as I said, it's recommended, we don't have warm weather right now, but as we look to, um, extend our, um, sports offerings at Copland, we will need it eventually, so if you're, since it came out, we might just go through it now.
Any questions on this?
One's taken. So we're seeing bolded items as the changes, we currently do not have these policies, so the whole policy is, is.
The whole policy for us is, um, is man, the bolded.
Was the changes that they made.
To the policy that they've already had.
Okay.
Next one would be, uh, policy two-six-one-zero, education program evaluation. This is a mandated policy. Uh, policy two-six-one-zero has been revised to provide additional details regarding New Jersey quality, single-account bidding continuum, just, uh, CUSAC. Requirement that districts monitor the progress of students and measure the effectiveness of programs initiatives and strategies. CUSAC operations indicator number four on the new district performance review requires a school district to use multiple, between one and two, sources of data to monitor student achievement and to evaluate the effectiveness of programs initiatives and strategies.
You want to make a question for that? As I said, that is mandated.
Policy number three-two-three-zero, outside activities.
Did anyone have any questions on this?
We have just suggested that we, um, take a look at the headings and just ensure that they look consistent.
I have feedback.
Okay.
So the headings are, uh, automated through Strauss Esme, we actually don't have control over the headings.
Okay.
So, and the headings look different online than they're printed.
Okay.
Uh, so where, uh, we looked into that with Strauss Esme, and basically they said if we wanted to make any changes, they would have to do it for everyone who subscribes to them, so I think we're just going to have to. What we can do is we can pull down, we could leave like spacing between the, the rest of the policy and the, uh, the right side heading. Uh, so that helps involves, because sometimes I know it overlaps a little bit over the title, we can, we can move our text down, but the, the right side piece, uh, we looked into it, I know there's, um, occasionally some non-uniformity there, but that's on Strauss Esme's part.
Thank you. What other, um, number two on the second page, um, there's the and, and the sentence? Teaching staff members should not privately tune their computers for conversations, or currently hold their classes, and? We got, um, most recently, we got another. Wasn't there another, we got, we got a revised policy for recommended revision, right?
And wasn't there a sentence? Oh, because I thought there was a sentence after that.
I must be reading, but I thought there was a sentence after this. Okay, um, policy number thirty-two forty-four, in-service training, this is a mandated policy. It's not mandated? Oh, no, excuse me, it's not mandated, sorry about that, we did take that part out. The only revisions that we put in here was actually to take out the mandated, uh, part of that on this paper, um, and add or designate. So any questions? Okay, policy number four-two-one-nine, commercial drivers license controlled substance and alcohol use testing. This is a mandated policy. You have your policy alert. Policy guide four-two-one-nine, commercial drivers license controlled substance and alcohol use testing, has been updated to reflect changes in federal regulations. Strauss Esme has removed the table of prohibited substances and unacceptable levels for testing results and replaced it with a citation to the federal regulations, where the most current table can be found. Strauss Esme decides to remove that table, be there frequent unannounced changes, I mean, if we adopt a policy that wouldn't be in compliance with the federal regulations. So let's say that again, that is mandated. Any questions? Let's see here, policy four-two-one-six, dressing and grooming. This came up, um, have to be discussed that for the, um, teaching staff members, this is just for the sports staff. We have revised it, um, which is, there's some provisions, um, just to screen.
It mirrors the teacher, the teacher staff here.
And the last policy, finally here, policy zero-one-six-eight-point-one, recording and photographing a public meeting. That is one thing that I had, uh, found, um, when I did the new board member orientation, one of, uh, things that was suggested is before a new board meeting, we might just take the time to go through your policy manual, as if we didn't have anything else to do. And, and, uh, just pick some out randomly, or in some sort of order, and I did notice that we, uh, changed what our policy is, we are now, um, live streaming our meetings, so we need to make sure our policy reflected that. So I have a question on that, on that policy, um, one's just a, I think it's probably just an oversight, uh, one, two, three, the fourth paragraph where, uh, it's bolded, there are two sentences bolded. I believe, um, it probably should be one sentence, where it says, in these instances, written parent permission will be obtained in advance of the meeting, if prior permission has not already been granted, it should be one sentence, not two. My question would be, and maybe it's for the, I'm probably not a reg, but when we have a group of students here, and suppose we have a, a chorus, or we have, we have a more recruit, and parents are videotaping. We have, and we can't stop them doing, and do they?
But all students, every, all students who perform here have had written permission.
So what happens if, and I don't want to play, you know, if, but I want to play it, so if a parent doesn't want his or their child videotaped? Does that mean they have to listen to the parents?
Deal with that on a case-by-case basis.
Uh, good answer. Okay. Okay. Any other questions? That is it. You were a little busy. Thank you. I can open it up to the public if there's any questions on any of what was said. Um, let me get a motion, please, motion, please, open to the public?
So moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Cherico? Please come up.
Philip Monchar, two-one, in the road. Um, it's a question about policy four-two-one-nine, and I have not seen it, so in terms of repeating it, it's obvious, I apologize in advance. Is there a differentiation between what I call periodic testing, that is every year, or any six months, whatever it requires, and to me, which is following an incident, like the one we had in Newark a couple of weeks ago?
I'm not familiar with the incident, you're referring to an incident in number?
Yeah, no, there was a bus which should crash, it turns out the driver was on drugs.
Oh.
So.
Okay.
I mean, you know, is there a policy, what you do in that process, even while testing is taking place?
Now, in those instances, I believe whenever there is a, an accident, there is a, a, a testing that follows it. Uh, this particular policy is talking about, uh, regular testing that our, our drivers have to, to, um, to keep their, their C P L.
But it's nothing to do with incidents, maybe with accidents, testing?
No, this is, uh, this is, no, this isn't, right.
Is, is there a policy for that?
Uh, that's a good question, and we can take a look at that, I, I think it's, uh, probably in, um, another part of noneducational code, uh, I, I think it comes up more under what the release are required to do, uh, but we'll take a look, if there's no reason, we couldn't add it to our.
Because just to make a point about.
Yeah.
Because just to make a point about the accident, there's, again, a wonderful one on the news, there was a lot of confusion of whether the person was on drugs or whether the person was on medication, and meanwhile, it wasn't clear then finding the person was arrested, it took a long time until things sorted out. It seems to me, you have that policy, if an incident happens, should the person be allowed to keep driving while the testing takes place or not? So it seems to me that you have to have something in place.
I would think the law would trump policy regardless. Correct. It's good to have a policy, but, you know, it becomes a legal issue immediately.
I'll report out on that.
Until the testing is completed.
And on March sixth meeting, I'll have a answer for you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, may I have a motion to close to the public?
So who?
Mrs. Jericho?
Second.
Mrs. Smith. So then, may I have a roll call, please, for the first reading of the policies that were just discussed, and then they would be at a second reading come at our next meeting, and if approved at that point, would become the official policy. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Jericho?
Yes.
Mrs. Helber?
Yes.
Mrs. Nessie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes.
Moving on to old business. Does anyone from the board have old business? Moving on to new business. Anyone from the board have new business?
I have new business.
Mrs. Shields?
As the liaison, I went to the Rockaway Township Substance and Research Alliance meeting last week. I'd say they were very welcoming, and I'm going to work right away. There are some presentations coming up here in Oakland for the eighth graders, there's someone coming in on March eighth to talk to them, the seventh graders on March thirteenth, and their annual trick or treat, April twenty seventh, which apparently will be a one hour hat. And that's it.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Helber? I know we talked about it before regarding the CPAC presentation the other day, and Mrs. Cohen had commented, I just want to reiterate that it was a really great experience. Mrs. Cohen really connected with her parents, and I got a lot of very positive feedback. She made them feel like they were part of the team, and it was just very well received. So, and I know we talked about the other science tonight a couple of times, I went also, just thank you to Mrs. Maxman and Mrs. Bracy. It was really fun, the activities were very engaging, and there was just a whole bunch of awesome stuff. Absolutely. I told you.
Did you read a report of what you learned?
Well, I got trapped in a contraption by my son. We've got pictures to prove it.
There you go.
He can live with it. It was fun. They had to create with certain criteria and work problems solve, and it was fun, and kids really loved it, and like, and just like Mrs. Shields said, like having a small group was necessary, because there was a lot going on, and I'm really glad to hear that we're going to have some, because it was, it was, it was a lot of fun.
You had to buy different edition shirts in that.
Yes, yes, absolutely. The bubble was a, yeah, that was, yeah.
You all didn't share that with us.
Yeah.
And the other new business?
Yes, a few, actually. I just wanted to reiterate on Mrs. Helber's comments about the CPAC meeting. Really did appreciate that Mrs. Cohen came out and she explained things about the IEP process that I wasn't even aware of, which is amazing. I also attended the New Jersey School Board Association training about meetings that matter, and do have some, if you hand out if anyone wants to look at it, specifically about doing the boards work effectively to advance student achievement. So that was a great leadership experience. I also attended a webinar about how to save time and money with the New Jersey School Board, Twenty First Century Technology Classroom Contract. So basically, it's a computer link that you have to go to, so I'll show that to you guys later. And, you know, while I was geeking out today on the website, I noticed that there was actually a lot of information about individual and the entire board certification. So if anyone wants the information on that, if they don't know already, I have it. Mrs. Helber and I have been trying to make sure that we are eligible to earn the new board member board membership certification. It's limited to your first two years of service, and we've completed the requirements in the first year.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So hopefully we'll hear something about it. That's it?
Good to know. Anyone else, new business?
I have two items. On March the fourteenth, Stony Brook School will be having a visitation in consideration of their candidacy for a national school of character. So that would be very, very impressive, that they're really already an anomaly, that in their first year of applying, they've been recognized as a state school of character. That team is sent there from the national schools, and they will be there throughout the entire day. So we will, I'll be there in the beginning to greet the team, and certainly, we hope to have a good update for that later on this year. Second item is today, Mr. Cuevas convened the first meeting of the district's green team, and that's part of our Sustainable New Jersey effort. And already, our schools are registered as part of Sustainable New Jersey. They have begun their efforts in terms of going through the activities that will possibly earn them designations, and we have at least one of our schools who is applying for the March fifteenth, two thousand dollar grant by PSENG under this area. So we'll update the board as we go along in that area.
Great, thank you. Anyone else, new business? No, I can open it up to the public if any, one second. May I have a motion, please, to open to the public? So will Mrs. Shields?
Second.
This is, no, this is Helber, sorry. Please.
Philip Monchar, two one in the road. I have a question about the superintendent's report. You mentioned that there's a question about number of days kids attend school being correlated strongly with achievement. So what steps are you planning to take as kids move through that number from zero up to whatever number they end up with?
Thank you for asking that question. So we, we've taken a number of steps. One of the largest steps is to create a system of data analysis where we monitor students who appear to be establishing benchmarks that would lead towards that total number of ten percent for chronic absenteeism. And early on in that effort, we contact parents, not just with formerly, some of those things we've done just through a letter, but now, as we see that beginning to advance, there's a personal connection that is made with the parent, and then, still at an early stage, an invitation for those parents to come in so that we could discuss what might be contributing to the attendance issues. It's an opportunity for parents to hear that although there may be oftentimes good reasons for this to occur that has implications, but the other piece is it lets us understand what dynamics might be contributing, because not every student is absent because they're ill, and some students, we're able many times to form some bridges to alleviate some of the concerns that are contributing to a student being absent. One of the other steps that goes into play, again, if that is continuing to progress as a academic or attendance improvement plan, and we make a dual commitment, both for school measures and for parent measures, that will contribute to the student coming to school. In addition, as I've mentioned, we've revamped all our letters, and we've really tried to eliminate that aggressive punitive language that basically said right from the get-go, we'll go and file true and see violations in court, because that's very off-putting. I mean, that doesn't mean that that will never happen, but certainly that's not our lead-in to the process. So in addition to that, we are working with teachers on points of dialogue with students, and actually, one of the most powerful pieces that research has shown is having one person ask a student when they return how they were and that they were missed. And they've shown that actually that one action can really make a big contribution to a student being in school when they know that their presence was missed by an adult. So those are some of the measures that we've been gaining. There's a tremendous amount of resources that are available on the attendance works website, as well as webinars and training that our principals are going into, and the principals are all involved in that personally. So those meetings that are happening are happening at the principal level with parents in that home scores the importance that we're placing on the attendance.
If not, may I have a motion to close to the public?
So who?
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Jericho. We are going to take a five-minute break just to let us get organized to switch from public meeting to budget meeting, so if you'll allow us to have a five-minute stretch break, we'd appreciate that. When we do return, it is a board of education work session, and as advertised, there's no public participation. You're welcome to stay and observe, but there will be no opportunity for any dialogue with the board. It's strictly a work session, and no actions will be taken. So we will return, or you'll see us back at the table in five minutes. Thank you. It's no easy task to create the budget, and it's a work in progress. This is the first draft. We have another meeting on March fifteenth, March fourteenth, I believe, as well, to continue discussions on the budget. Mrs. DeCarlo, we have our utmost gratitude into the district that we goes October, so we were thrown into it. So thank you very much, Dr. McLaughlin, and thank you for overseeing it, and I now will turn it over to you.
Thank you. So as Sue mentioned, this is our first draft, and please keep that in mind. It's very, I'm gonna add my thanks to Rachel for, I think, what was a yeoman's project in getting it into this shape and this close to where we want it to be in the first, in a first try, and we know we do have a few more rounds to go. I'm going to share some highlights with you in just a moment. I do want to emphasize that the process that's occurred so far, prior to this budget being Meetings were held with each individual who has budget responsibility in the school district, so our building principals and our department heads who oversee portions of the budget. Those individuals have at their discretion an amount of money that is consistent with prior years, but we do give them the latitude to move those ones around so that they can address the priorities for their individual department, for their individual school. And we try not to micromanage that. That doesn't mean that we didn't ask questions, or that there wasn't justification, but this budget is not one that's top-down. We believe it needs to be developed by those who are implementing it. After those budget meetings, then, around the goals and the objectives that the school district has set, these priorities were established, and I do want to say that it's perhaps different than when you have a leadership team remaining constant, where you can take last year's budget and compare it to this year's budget. Certainly, as a new leadership team, we looked at our goals and objectives that we put together with the board of education, and really made our best effort to align budget priorities with our educational priorities. So we did not do that in a way necessarily to make it reconcile or to fit with whatever last year's budget was. So if you see differences, that there are changes in practices or in emphasis in areas of the budget, I don't want that to come as a surprise. That's truly how it came to be. So I do want to begin then by speaking about some highlights that are in this budget. One of the, I'm going to begin by talking about those areas that are new to this budget, and which we feel emphasize the direction that we're going in, and that the order of my presentation is not necessarily in the order of importance, although everything that I mentioned, I believe, is important to us as we progress as a district. There are two administrative positions that are new to this budget. One is a central office position, and one is a district-wide, school-level position. The first being a district-wide human resources director, and I do know that in years past, there was an individual who had this responsibility, and a number of years ago, due to budget constraints, that had to be eliminated. However, the, our staff and our staff needs are very, very important. We certainly can meet the needs of our students, but we're not meeting the needs of the staff who service them. And human resources is a speciality in and of itself, and requires a great deal of both proactive as well as reactive attention. So in this budget, there is a designation for a human resources director. Additionally, one of the areas that we know is so important is the area of curriculum and instruction. Our district, especially compared to other districts of our size and complexity, have greater infrastructure to support teachers and students, and to work alongside parents, and also support principals in terms of content knowledge, curriculum and instruction. And so what we'd like to do is part of a two-year phase-in, is to implement an elementary supervisor who will support that work of instruction in the district, and that, as I said, would be part of a two-year phase-in where we would see in the following year a second person, and at that point, we would really feel that we had the appropriate amount of support available, and someone, again, who can truly concentrate on content areas as a full-time endeavor. The elementary supervisor would also be another individual to provide school coverage when our school principals are unable to be on hand, which has been an area of need in the district. A very important endeavor that's built into this budget is behind the idea of school intervention. Right now, one of the needs that's been apparent to us, both from feedback from our teachers and from our parents, and in our own observations of data and students, is the need for greater intervention in our schools, academic intervention. We have a number of students who have significant difficulties maintaining pace with curriculum and instruction at their age and grade level. Many of those students, because of, I think, a contributing lack of intervention available in general education, eventually require consideration under special education, and although certainly, we know that there will always be students with disabilities who manifest themselves, I think one of the reasons that we have such a high level of intervention in special education, approximately twenty percent of our population is classified, is because the resources for intervention disproportionately lie in special education and not in general ed. And we would like to provide students with help right from the beginning when they require that help, and so to do that, we would have a minimum of one full-time academic interventionist in each of our schools, and at each of our elementary schools, and one full-time reading specialist in each of our elementary schools. In a couple of our schools where there is... In a couple of our schools where there is more significant need, that may rise above that level, but that would be the consistent level that each school would have. An area that our district has talked about for a long time, and I think there's great support for, is the area of expanding our extracurricular activities, especially at our middle school level. There's a great enthusiasm in our town for, right now, activities that are provided, thankfully, through our recreation department and this would certainly not replace that. But what we'd like to begin is a three-year phase-in of sports at the middle school level, beginning next year with a girls' and boys' basketball program. And we truly feel that our students would find this to be engaging, another great reason to be in school beyond academics. And it would provide an enthusiasm, not just for the students who participate in the teams, but for the rest of our population to rally around. And we're looking for that dynamic. We know it's here. We know that there's support for it and we're ready to move ahead with that. Another area that we've identified is an area of need, has been in the area of lunchtime and recess coverage. And particularly having adequate certified staff on hand. Presently, our collective bargaining agreement allows for a limited amount of time that staff are dedicated to that. Beyond that, a lot of time, it is necessary to reiterate certificated individuals to be supervisors. We have built in budgeted funds so that we can have more certified, a greater certified presence so that the safety and welfare of our students is overseen always by a certified staff member, even during lunch hours. And then finally, the last highlight that I will mention is we have seen a great impact, positive impact, of the Rutgers behavioral program here at the middle school. Indicators, including suspensions, HIVs and at-risk assessments, have all shown a positive trend, which we attribute heavily to the presence of a full-time mental health clinician who proactively works with kids here at the middle school. There has been a consistent request by our elementary schools to have that same type of intervention available for our younger students, many who exhibit needs early on that are similar to what we're seeing at the middle school. And hopefully, with more proactive intervention, will also contribute to the decreased likelihood of students having these types of incidents once they do reach seventh and eighth grade. So we have asked and we have incorporated into this budget, a full-time Rutgers behavioral mental health clinician who will rotate one day in each of our elementary schools and who will work in concert with the program that we have here at the middle school. And we believe that that will really be a tremendous boost to our students' social and emotional health. And those are the highlights that I wanted to begin with. We have, on the second page, areas that are offset to be able to provide these in the budget in a way that does not increase the budget because we are committed to staying certainly just a little bit below that 2% cap that the state has placed on us. I want to emphasize the fact that we have the latitude to go beyond the 2% cap because we have bank cap and certainly a lot of flexibility that we could go in that direction, but we're committed certainly to our community and to the economic sensitivity of our times and the fact that we want quality schools, but we also want to do that in a way that doesn't place an undue burden on our citizens. So the second page that I have, including some reallocation of our staff into different positions, reductions in presently some number of stipend positions that can be incorporated elsewhere, some modification to office air health throughout the district, some deductions in the area of technology and in out-of-district placements, which are happening as a natural phenomenon. All of those, as you can see, offset the costs that are associated with the highlights that I've shared with you. So that's just an introduction to the discussion that we'll have tonight.
Thank you very much. The best way to proceed, and I think the most organized way, would be to use the summary pages, pages, kind of beginning as a framework. And we'll go through each page. I'll ask if there's any concerns for any items on that page. And then to just cross off your, if someone else has your concern, that would be helpful. So the best way to do this then would be going right to page one for the projection report. Mrs. DeCarlo, I should ask you a comment before we get on to this.
I do have several things that I want to make out. Some little things, if I can.
Sure. That'd be great. Thank you.
So if I need to refer to them, you'll have them in the description. One of them is projected enrollment and the other one is projected when the increase impacts.
Just take a few minutes to skip through the projected enrollment and staffing and if anybody has any comments before we proceed. Looking at the enrollment projection, I guess I just have one question. In the past, we've always had a few positions there reserved, just in case, you know, there are certain sections you might want to red flag saying we may have to open up a third section or possibly a fourth section come July because we had this surge in enrollment. Do we have any reserve at all in what you're projecting in this budget? Do we need to do that?
We have built-in reserves.
Okay. We would be able to find something though?
Yes.
Thank you. Because you never know. Last minute, we got this late sometimes in August, having to open another section because there was a sudden surge.
Yeah, if there was a change, we'd have to go back to where that would be.
I have a question. I don't know if it's intentional, but in the KDM enrollment sessions, three, four, and five, I don't know if four and five got mixed up or if that's intended for you.
Right now, it looks like the four is current.
You'll see there's a footnote there that this is KDM's present. It's the only school that hasn't been updated for home, right down to the bottom, very bottom. Yes. Yeah, and I did speak verbally with the principal. There was a medical issue there that kind of got in the way of it.
With McLaughlin, the specialized classes, the arts, the, do you know how many sections go on? Which of those are grades applied for classes?
BD, LD, and MD are all three-year span classes. So they're not done by grade level. So as you'll notice, there's a BD, there's one section, two, four, total of five. But all of those classes, because they're self-contained, can have up to a four-year age range by law. And I think most appropriately, although we may try to put kids together by grade, we have the flexibility. So I would want to commit to you that they'd all always be sixth graders or seventh graders or eighth grader.
Any other questions with projected enrollment? No, I'll go back and take them. Okay, so we'll put that aside. I guess if we come back to what they're going to state with the tax levy.
Well, the Kenzo, that I gave in the budget that we're going to there too, we're not quite there yet, but the numbers in our sites were the 2% general increase, but the total tax increase of 1.9% in the debt service. Looking at the second sheet, we have the total tax levy this year in 2019, which is what we're hoping for next year. And we have a toll value that's assessed at 340,000. So that will be, we have to decrease the year taxes of $15.10 per year for a dollar to a cent. Based on the tax levy that was proposed, external assessment that the town did and the tax levy.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Then we can then start with the summary pages of the projection before we move to page one. Anybody have any questions about any item on page one of the summary? I do. Just that it's a general question that throughout the budget book, those are really the only different schools. And you see that in one section, one school has such a greater increase, like this is just the first one that comes up in the book, was like a couple of nurses, they have a 36.92% increase, whereas the other schools are, you know, not in that range. So is that anything that stands out, like why we're doing these larger increases?
I mentioned before, we did meet with each building, so there is variation. There seems was an area that we specifically looked at in each school. Some schools have higher incidences of particular conditions. So you might have a school that, for example, has a higher population of kids who need that, that's a very expensive item. So if you are, if you need to have greater supply there, but basically that's, there is a, we're not telling every nurse, this is what you have. You know, we're looking at it in each building.
I always ask this question, for some reason, every year, the explanation is 18. These numbers make me dizzy, but the district nurse, what is that, what does that mean? I ask them.
There are supplies, you mean, for the district nurse or the professional?
How is that different than individualized buildings?
Okay, so that, those might be centralized types of supplies that are provided versus, for example, podiometers. They have to be recalibrated every summer. That might be charged to district versus the school because it's one cost piece, medical waste. You have to re-up your medical waste license and also, you know, would you collect your boxes and send it out as a group? So that doesn't have to be building.
Okay, thank you. I remember.
Any else? And then me too. Can I just tell them this?
Sure. When we get to the salary lines, as you can see, second line down is 97%. And then you see the five lines after that showing the increase. That has to do with ESSA, but now we have to do school-based budgets. So as far as salaries go, we had to reassign everybody according to the working. So this year, it wasn't done initially, we just changed it over. This year, you can see it's popping down, salary line situation. Zero lines, we used to reach to the district line. Now we can see it's, I think, it's 10, we changed one by 38. It's kind of the year.
Any questions on page two?
Does that mean subs, these are quite different? Because I know subs are all over at different places.
Now, subs, there are certain lines, like subs, I mean, a lot of lines in the budget that we can prorate according to average daily enrollment. So I can prorate that out next year, like in the other side. So some lines.
At the end, after we get into the whole summary, I know I have a few general questions that I wanted to ask, but aren't the way necessary to complete, it's hard to complete. So I do want to come back to the whole sub second, you can have at the end. That's okay.
I do have a question. It's about two-thirds of the way down, it's 11, 000, 216, 320, 5930. Purchasing, purchase, I mean, professional services at a 51% increase. If I did my homework right, it seems exactly the Rutgers, expert Rutgers behavioral person lies. Is that why?
I just checked my floor right here.
Sure. That would be on page, it's also on the child study team, page two.
I can read the underbelly now.
Oh, that's nice.
It's the healing for her.
Look, that's nice if it goes in there. In case you're wondering, it's child study team section, page two as well. What caught me off my eye was the original appropriation was 92,000. We spent, we had to incorporate more. We spent just about all of it, but we're going up another 100,000. So I'm assuming that's correct.
Start this period, we'll have this on.
Okay, so that's your electric school load of three. Thank you very much. I have another question on page two. I want to take over here. Salaries for the summer. And again, that's one of those general sub kind of questions too. There's summer employees everywhere in this budget. What caught my eye was, maybe it was just the way that it's being organized here, that there's a 71% increase. So I'm wondering, are we doing something in the summer that requires more staffing?
No. So this is not an increase. We will, I think what your real question is, maybe we can come back to in the next budget meeting, is why does it look like an increase? And where was that money last year? But this is not, as a matter of fact, well, I would say that pretty much this summer is awash with last summer in terms of what we've done. If anything, I think we might have some. If anything, I think we might have some cost efficiencies, I don't want to say reductions, but efficiencies. You know, some of this, for example, like child study team evaluations, we don't even have a list yet of what our team evaluations are, so that may or may not be an efficiency. But we're not projecting any more money into our, we have not expanded our programs, we've maintained them. So I think what the question is, is where was that money last year if it wasn't on this line?
You read my money. Thank you very much.
If you go into the full salaries of, come back a little bit, we go to where the justification is.
What page?
It'll be on page eight. So we go to full salaries, both in first, second.
That's what I'm saying.
And then you see page one start again. Go to page eight in that area. And we see, I got to start out with summer salaries, how many teachers, how many days, how many hours per day, how much per hour. And that was the...
And that's what threw me off, because I thought, well, that was similar to what we did, you know, last year.
You decided out.
Right, it was similar, and that's why I didn't understand the increase, so thank you.
Yeah, I was wondering exactly where to get that line.
Thanks. Any other questions, page two? Page three?
Sorry? Yeah, just a question for Greg, because it's pretty well directed. I'm sorry, what, curriculum directed by? Is that one of the positions we talked about?
Curriculum direct?
I just hear that. Come on, that page.
The wrong, yes. That's where I salary of the position.
Thank you.
Anyone else, page three? I don't want to ask this question twice. Salary, you're right. Okay, never mind. Just cross mine. No more page three? And page three, four? Questions?
I just have a question about all of the library material budgeting and that. Specifically, that's not necessarily something we're designating for just paper books, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, I think that's, as we're moving towards a media center steam type of philosophy, library materials may not be periodicals, reference books, and trade books, but maybe 3D printers, materials for the printer, micros outside the ones we're getting done in, those types of items.
Future-ready?
Future-ready, 21st century.
Thank you. Anything else, page four?
I have one. Second line, child study team presenters.
Yeah, so that is an area where our director of special education indicated that there was a requirement for training, increased training from our own staff. It may include handled with care presentations. So our own staff are trainers for handled with care. So we, when they provide training, and handled with care has been a big, big item that we're trying to get our arms around, make sure that we have all the staff trained. Yes.
Thank you. Anything else, page four? Page five?
This is gross, I can see your face.
Yes.
The six from the town supplies, I could not even try to explain to academic, could mean something tech. Is it professional development or tech?
Yes.
Have we never really supplied in that?
So your question is why the increase?
Yes. It's professional development.
For supplies for professional development?
Supply of that.
Six one down. Because we originally appropriated 2,500.
Right.
We spent nothing, and we're proposing 7,000.
Okay. So including in that line, educational technology equipment. V. Morris budgeted $5,000 for manufacturing laser equipment, instructional. So that would be makerspace equipment and supplies. And he budgeted $1,000 for additional supplies. So it's instructional and supplies for makerspace. Just as a beside to that, technology, Martin was a colleague, and his, I mean, that's what's really called I T, M I S. We made that correction, so find it, remember by Greg. He wrote the budget compared to this year, and took it off a lot. So there was a line, and now questions to a couple things. Why can't he turn, why is he going?
So pretty much this is supplies and training to implement more of our future-ready. And in summer sex, we're sharing the load, right? For what we're trying to do, because in theory, they're all different, they're all similar passions for the same thing, so. Thank you. To answer my question, if I notice several, just we decreased technologies, wow, that's different.
So, thank you.
What's the thought for supplies, remind us, are instead? Where are you, on what line?
A couple lines up, we're like, um...
For L. A.? I see 100%.
That is, Lev, will you be more specific, just give me a minute? That line specifically is where we're budgeting, not necessarily for Rehearsive Workshop, but for the foundations material. So the new word study materials, grades K through two, is specifically in that line. So that would be providing all those resources in all of our elementary schools.
Anything else, page five? Turn that to page six. No one? Page seven?
I have one, page seven. It is about halfway down. It's workshops dash M I S office registration, I'm sorry, office. My pardon, supplies, M I S office materials, which is 252 dash 649 000. You can also find it, I think it supplies, it is supplies, my apologies. Page four, under the M I S department, the I T department. And this is where I found my Chromebooks, 260 Chromebooks. So my question is, we're purchasing 260 new Chromebooks. To whom are they going? And what's happening to the eighth graders who are going to leave their Chromebooks behind?
And the Chromebooks are going to rotate back to the elementary level. And the reason that we are not going to give the eighth grade Chromebooks to the sixth graders, a couple of different reasons. One, we are going to be changing out both the type of Chromebook and also the package that we buy it with. So currently, we've had a bit more breakage than we expected, either with the covers, our Chromebooks are damaged many times inside the covers. And our plan is to buy what's called a ruggedized Chromebook, only to require a cover. So it will be a more durable product, more associated with the needs of a middle schooler who sometimes has not yet developed fine dexterity. So the... Those Chromebooks will rotate down and help us with our continued commitment at the lower level towards a, towards a one-to-one, even if we're not, if the students are not going home. And of course, that, we always have a little bit better success with repair when they don't go home. The other piece of this is that with these new purchases and the company that we'll be getting them from, there is a warranty package attached to it. So presently, when we dove into the one-to-one, the theory was that we could do both repairs in-house and that we would be very capable of keeping up with that. It hasn't worked out quite as planned, but the providers now are offering with the purchase the ability for those, for those items that do get damaged to be swapped out. And they'll allow up to a few instances of that per device as part of the purchase price. And that will alleviate a couple of things. But one in particular, the amount of time that our technicians are currently devoting to repairing devices. And it will also cut down on the amount of time that a student might be without a Chromebook or with it. Right now, what we do is we might loan them a Chromebook that isn't theirs, and then replace it again. So it's a little awkward in terms of the exchange. So there's a couple of things that are happening there. But again, the commitment is that we rotate the devices down and also then during the, you know, they talk about a four-year window of the technology being useful. So this probably will extend the life of those devices that we're rotating down versus rotating them back through the middle school.
Thank you. Makes sense. That same item also versus... Lost my place, my apologies. Library to media center conversion. Be a little more clear about that?
So we have several of our libraries. As you, as you know, and we've mentioned a few times tonight, we're talking about future-ready. Our intent is to both physically and also in terms of practice, have our libraries embracing a more media center, STEM-oriented, makerspace type of philosophy, keeping with where schools are headed now, where education's headed in terms of providing our kids with experiences that lead them to skills in engineering and coding and those types of areas. But that also requires some redesign of our centers, so that we have spaces that are suited to areas where kids use manipulatives, where we're creating products, where we have 3D printers located. It may require some breakdown of bookshelves, removable bookshelves that can go back and forth. 21st century furniture, that's really modular in nature, can be put into different designs and used in different places.
Had those needs.
But now we call them 21st century. That was when they were 20th century modular furniture, this is 21st century. So we are doing that on an incremental basis. So this is not, we're not doing a total makeover of our libraries. We're going to do it piece at a time, portion at a time. We want to do it in a way that those areas are effectively utilized, rather than remake the whole space before people are ready in practice to put that, make that happen. And so we have a couple, for example, here, we have an area of the Coburn Library that we've already mapped out for this to happen. K D M has a section of their library that they've already, that they're looking at happening. So it won't be the total library, but it will be a portion of it. And we'll each year incrementally increase that in a way that it's being effectively utilized. People are learning how to use that area and expanding it when their proficiency expands as well.
And one thing I, I guess I'm assuming that it's not that you're going to take one school and make it into a media center and then the four other schools don't have anything, it's going to be, everybody's going to go a little bit, a little time to rebuild them all.
Right, and the principals, along with their staff, are designing what they, what they feel will work in their buildings. So we're allowing some, some of that to happen for them.
Thank you. Anything else, page seven?
Just one question, with the same thing in I T, the workshop registration steps has a big increase. A lot more money is going to the train.
Yes, so we spent some time discussing that with V. Morris. And there's areas that he really wants his technicians to go out and get certifications in. Different arenas that they're eager to learn about, but they acquire technical certifications that will build, continue to build the expertise of the staff that we have. That's, that's going to be that group right there, you know, in, in the I T office.
So there could be times where there's no one in district to be trying to work.
Well, no, it might be that, for example, you know, the person who's really in charge of web design is out. Or another time, someone who's in charge of network safeguards is out. It's not that the whole I T department's going to, yeah.
Oh, everything is listed, okay. Anything else, page seven? Hey, Jay?
This is gross, is that a lot?
That's okay, that's what this is for.
So if you go halfway in between, we're doing, this is our lunch, the implementation of what you're talking about. The bullet points, that's what we're seeing that, the lunch and recess.
Yeah.
So we'll probably see a change.
Yes, you'll see a change there.
Thank you. Anything else, page eight? Page nine?
Yes, for salary transportation, I guess, sub driver, that has a large increase for O D and R. We have a problem, it's 185.02%. Okay, originally budgeted for this year was the same amount. So things were done out of the line. But if you look at what the current expenditure is, you're going to have to transfer back into that line, the current year. Because appropriation and our expenditure. So we're going to have to, one, we need to sort of go through it. What I look at when I go line by line is... What I look at when I go line by line is what we have, what we spend, how close we are to spending ourselves. Yeah, so if you look at the amount now, the current appropriation, we are going to have to transfer one of them to another. Transportation laws into...
Okay, so truly the percentage is not really like what we're going to have each year.
It's like the same amount as originally budgeted for last year.
Yes. Anything else, page nine?
Um, yes. I think it started the way down with security. Seventy-four point seven nine percent. That was budgeted for the...
Okay. I thought it was, but I just wanted to check. Page ten? Page eleven?
Yes, on your salary, it's right in six-eight GNT. Did that just go to the six-eight? We're not losing that position because you're losing your money there, right?
Uh, that is fifty-six?
Yes. That was in budget for this year, but nobody attached to it?
Okay.
So it wasn't anybody attached to that, so I didn't know.
So did that...
What happened in position is probably in the... Break six to eight. Okay, so we probably extracted, we assigned it, but there was nobody making that amount of money. It was just a...
But we currently have a person in that position.
Yeah, what Rachel's saying is it's, we got put in with the rest of the salaries. Not, it wasn't put in as GNT, it was put in elsewhere. So we can move it, but definitely the person that we have in there wasn't making fifty-six. So the number that was there before wasn't factored.
Okay, at the time this budget was approved, we didn't have anybody.
Right.
And that's probably why that happened.
At the very last, bottom of the page, educational S-E-S-C. I think that's what it is.
Yes.
S.
Uh-huh.
It wasn't there before and now it's there. It's like a hundred percent increase for each child. It wasn't in seventeen. Scary.
Uh, she justified that by assemblies to support HIB school funding.
What was that again?
Assemblies to support HIB and school funding.
Anything else, page eleven? Page twelve? I thought, I couldn't find the backup board. Third line down, purchase professional. I have no idea what that is.
We appropriated sixty-five-nine last year, or this current year. We spent eighty-nine hundred, proposed back up to sixty-seven.
Okay, so what got moved onto that line? Actually, frontline got moved in there, which hadn't been required. So we put forty-six thousand dollars of budgeting for frontline, which had been in the revenue account, principal account.
What is frontline?
Oh, after-trad.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, okay. Got it, okay. No, I'm front, I know, okay. Okay, so that's forty thousand.
So he took that forty-six thousand dollars onto that line and chose the one he had.
Okay, yeah.
That's the biggest item on that line. He's got educational networks, reposting, district, annual contract, accounting, notification system, and frontline.
I just didn't know until I found it, I didn't have it. Great, thank you. How do they follow up with swing? Are we getting swings? I love good swings.
Swing, yeah.
Sub-service, that goes to my sub question. So that's the substitute.
See, a lesson one ninety-eight, one hundred three twenty.
Well, ASOP is our, swing, I don't want to steal you under. But swing is a supplemental substitute service. So we recently contracted with them, as you know. We've had a history of substitute issues in the district. So I'm eager to share the data with you because, and I know we love data, which I, you know, I do too. But we have seen from last year to this year, significant fill rate increases for our staff. But I need to tell you some of last year's data is pretty, and I don't know if that's data that the board examined last year, but it was in the eighties, which is terrible fill rate. And so this year, although we're not where we want to be, we've made significant gains in every month. And we're often in the nineties. This past month, we didn't quite reach ninety, but we've been over ninety most months this year. I'd like to be higher in the nineties. But swing is a group that will supplement the subs that we have so that when we cannot fill with our own subs, we can contract with them. They're third-party contractors. We only pay for what we use. There is an administrative fee attached to it. So it's, you know, obviously it's going to be our secondary piece. But one of the ways that we have found that they should be very useful is by those days that we have our coaching going on, where we know in advance we're going to have teachers out of class, we can use all swing substitutes. The further in advance you use them, the more likely that they can fill it. And then they would, the people who are available at seven in the morning are going to be our subs, so we're not tapping into them. We're not, we haven't pulled them out of class. So that's where we're really hoping swing will help. The, as you know, we've also increased, and I thank the board for this, our per DM rate to a hundred dollars a day. And we're up to about six or seven now of the floater subs who work three or four days a week, which has made a big difference. We've even had some days, and this may not sound extraordinary to you, but we've had some days where we didn't need them at the middle school and they were sent down to one of the elementarys to cover. But from what I understand, it's been a long time since the middle school said they didn't eat a sub. So it is getting better. It's not, again, not where we want it to be yet, but swing is one of the additions that we've put in.
Thank you. Is there already talking about that? I had a question about that number. What does that, does that number cover?
I don't know.
The swing number?
Yeah.
Well, per DM cost for swing side is a hundred dollars plus thirty-five dollars.
Was that again?
Yeah. So when you do a budgeting, not to sound mean sometimes, you just have to make kind of a best guess as to how much you're going to need, how much you're going to use it. You don't want to put yourself in a position when you're going to scramble and you might come on the lines, you need to use that sub service. So we wanted to make sure that we had enough money in there to use frontline days, doctor, instead of, you know, ahead of time. When we're using the sub, so it can only be a single order. Also, it's not a percentage, it's a lot. So it's a unknown line. At this point, you're going to use outsourced sub-service. So we're going to go back to our administration.
I'd like to mention that as, the other piece with this, in addition to our rates going up, as our fill rate goes up and we use more subs, we will spend more money in the sub-line. I mean, that's just going to happen. So the sub-lines have been reflective of how many subs we've had, but we've been so short of subs, you are going to see an increase there. I think that's just something that, you know, is a natural, as we make improvements in that area, our costs are going to go up.
Is it possible by our next budget meeting to get a number of, you go through the entire budget, because there's sub-lines in almost every position, plus the hundred thirty thousand for swing. So is it possible to, in your magic, let us know when it all comes out to me? Put all the sub-lines together and the adds, can you let us know?
No, I have it here.
Oh, okay. How much, how much is our sub of this budget of subs?
The regular, just subs, our sub, the swing sub.
Okay.
This year, we budgeted seven hundred and thirty, no, sorry. Seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two. So our initial budget for eighteen nineteen was nine hundred and eleven thousand. Money was transferred out of there, so currently we have appropriated eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five twenty-two. For next year, I budgeted seven hundred and thirty-four thousand. So this year is, the current appropriation is ninety-five thousand dollars we are. Then next year, and we have a hundred and thirty-five thousand on top of that this year. So it would be eighty hundred and seventy thousand dollars for everything. And our original appropriation for last year was nine hundred and eleven thousand, adjusting to this next one.
So it actually reflects the decrease.
It's come down a little bit. We haven't used a lot of it, but then let's also practice by saying that we now have to add our subs. We'll learn for every thirty hours they work, an hour, six times. And we've spoken to our attorney. The best way to track that and to pay it is just to pay one month sum to itself.
Does that come out of there as relevant?
Yes. So technically, part of the side to come out of sub is to pay.
What does that law want to refer to?
Twenty-nine October.
Red wine.
Thank you. Anything else on page twelve? It's your lovely form, service there on the... Yeah, uh-huh, okay. Moving on to page thirteen. You are in the top left-hand. Page thirteen. I have a question. Is that okay? Curriculum instruction, the last two lines, math instructional materials on the and science instructional materials. And you can find that under the curriculum and instruction section on page five. So just get to there. So for math materials... I just got it back to my sub, hold on, sorry. So we appropriated for this year fifteen thousand. We spent only four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, get your bank up to fifteen thousand. And when I went for the explanation, it said Reflex Math. Is that coming back or where it wasn't before and all of a sudden now it's here?
It was in the schools. So the schools were funding that separately for this past school year. So we're funding that essentially going forward. And for those that don't know, Reflex Math is an online program for students to practice and demonstrate mastery of their math facts. So that's not going to be something that's budgeted in the schools, school budget. You're just going to find that essentially in one place.
Great, so then on the same page, under science, what is a middle school pilot in science DVO?
A typo, my apologies.
I racked on screen.
I think when I wrote this note, I was thinking of Janet in middle school, but then realizing that pilot is in DVO.
Oh, so it's not?
It's not, no. But I was working with Janet and talking about it. So we are planning to pilot a new science textbook in DVO next year. We're still working out the details of that, yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
The answer to that question. Anything else, page thirteen?
I just kind of have a general question on a few of the pages in the next. I'm assuming all the same thing. So our big increases in the school intervention categories are those supplemental of the interventionist, the really specialist, ordinary building program? That's what that's reflecting?
Anything else?
Well, this particular line is the second from the top on page thirteen. Is the dwire intervention. There's another one, I think, on the next page, which had like a two-hundred percent increase that the Stony Brook intervention had a, I'm just assuming those are the increase in staffing for that.
The stuff, Stony Brook was... Stony Brook was a bookcase and a team. The supplies, because I had to question that too, four hundred percent. Far up, it's only a hundred dollars. Yeah, it was, it was furniture.
I had a question on page thirteen. Anything with the language art? So we go to curriculum, page five. Is this switching out the various workshops?
No, Erola's going away. I think the line you're referring to is forty-four, three hundred there? Okay. So that is bringing in, so Erola, that's actually, you see a decrease there.
Right.
Okay, because that's where Erola had been funded for in previous years. You then see on the line, the note next there, we've budgeted two thousand for units of study to be replenished. The reason that's only two thousand is because we are able to fund the units of study out of this year's budget. And so that order is going through right now, actually, over these couple of weeks. So the teachers will have those units of study this spring in preparation for next year.
Who else, thirteen? Fourteen?
I have one regarding the math curriculum, or the curriculum instruction. Is it two or are you on them? And it's, I'll leave a quarter of the way up on five. We want, okay, it's five thousand, sixty-six percent increase. Add this up for curriculum review.
We are going to be looking at the math curriculum. It's not officially up, but it's something we're going to look at. And something we're exploring now is a potential pilot there as well. So this is a, to be candid, it's a placeholder number until we determine what, the size of the pilot and what may or may not look like.
Because with the changeover, with the type of testing to, for, to buy the textbook, we're maybe bad harshly to check that's a changeover?
In terms of the...
Or here versus whatever they're going to call it next?
Yes, yes, correct.
Whatever they're going to call it next, it's another curriculum.
Thank you, fifteen.
So, more friends than a lot of, I'm looking at, I guess it's empty instruction materials?
That would be under the child's section, section 38.
Okay, it's on, yeah, it's on page 7. We put into the first touch map, it's a one-time purchase of $3,000. So, backing that out, I'm putting in my... And that's on page 7.
Okay, so we have the first map, what time, like, if we... Like, I guess I don't understand what the purchase of that is.
It's, it's a... My understanding is, well, she said touch map is a one-time purchase. It's a program that can purchase. And the ones we have, it's not a purchase of the next year, because we are... One-time purchase.
We don't have it anywhere, because I'm not asking, you don't have it anywhere in the district?
Yes, that's...
But you don't have it, other places in the district?
I think if it's a program, I'd like to commit to the board to go back at our next meeting with more details about this together.
I could be totally wrong.
No, I'd like to research.
It's listed in one of the other disabled programs or referred programs. In... So, we just checked.
Yeah, I'll do that, sure.
Along the same lines, I have the project about the coast house, which are visits for both the MD and the artistic program, which really teaches life skills. We initially did that because we didn't have a life skills curriculum. We have since, to my knowledge, improved the life skills curriculum in-house. So, my question is, is there still a need? Is it beneficial for these students that travel?
The times I've explored this question, when field trip requests have come up throughout the year, I've gotten a lot of the positive feedback about this being valuable. I can take another look and ensure a lineup with our curriculum that's adopted and keep an eye on this going forward. But the times I've checked, I've gotten positive feedback.
Okay, just that I'd like to know, make sure that it's just integrated with what we already have. So, maybe if you're, if you're supposed to build for field trips, you're supposed to be using the services we weren't formed for in the district. So, how it worked in your field trip?
Okay, therefore, the question relates to, we're now offering the services in the district or the field trip still something?
Is our life skills curriculum being implemented, or are we relying on field trips? That's what it's up to.
Well, there's a lot of salaries for our same teachers, resources, plans, services, etc. And there's very, very good, maybe it has a large increase. All we get is more classes that you already don't have there. It's thirty-six, that's maybe, um... So I'm showing one, two, three, four, twenty-five F.T. positions here. It's on page forty-six in full salaries. Uh, I think you might be screening that a little bit, and then just go to, um... Sorry.
Oh.
Is that right? I'm not really screening the numbers, but I think. Page sixteen? Seventeen?
I have a question. If you go down closer to the bottom, where it says athletic salaries. The percentage for the first one is the four hundred thirty-six, we're eighty-four percent, and then one hundred percent. I'm just wondering, I know that one of these is the new program, the basketball program that's being added on. Will there be a few to participate? At all for the student in the basketball program? Is that currently free for the charter? I don't really know. Just move along.
So obviously, this number's going to change for me.
Any general questions, since we've now gone through some? I'm not really a hundred and ten percent if this is the exact place to ask it, but I know I'll forget. So we have budget finances for Share 911. And I'm just curious on how any of those funds could be reimbursed via the new law? And if we can look into, because I know they have the link and all of that stuff. But I just didn't know if we can do a little search or pad.
Yeah. We had a discussion about that at the last county meeting. It's still not clear how the money from the law is going to get filtered down. And you do know that we have to put in a panic button, because the law now necessitates a panic button. Speculation that I heard was that most of the money will go towards the panic button, but there's a lot of, uh, lack of specificity in terms of what kind of panic button, where the panic button has to be located. A lot of details that haven't been worked out yet. And the, the flow of monies from that law seems to be part of that lack of specificity.
Because I recently saw a segment in the local community network, it was by this one, Emily, about, I'm going to say, because she lost her county. And it was this superintendent was talking about how she has implemented these traveling panic buttons. And when she was going through the whole thing with the gentleman, it seemed very similar to the Share 911 presentation I had seen. It was a different product, but, so I was just curious.
They told us, don't buy panic buttons.
Okay.
Because if you do, it's likely to be the wrong kind. And then you'll end up having a...
So she, this individual just thought they were potentially ahead of her?
Yeah.
It might not be.
Yeah, she might actually, they might do another segment on her basically saying.
Right. Thank you, though. I just, anything a little bit help?
I have a few, who else does? Just, you know, the site too, like, am I else the IT, we, dare, there's two, dare, that was in here, and dare likely exists next year. So dare one, there should be out. Should be week one, day or, I think dare, her two or three, she'll find her place three times, I think, in the budget. That should be changed. I saw that there's a virtual sign, electronic sign for virtual, which would be the only one school then that does not have one, that I know wants one. And that's a whole other issue because Wire is on the county road, and we got, we're getting the sign there initially, it took us over a year to get approval from the county to be able to erect a sign there. Is there any way in this budget going forward that you could show some kind of preliminary work, so that a year from now, Wire might be able to get assigned to? It's like the lost child. Because all of our schools now will have electronic signs, and Wire won't. But I'm wondering if we can, I know you can't promise, but if there's any way to...
Well, we did, we did say that we'd do virtual and then Wire in year two. So, you know, I do know this preliminary work, because Franklin's talked about the fact that we have to get permits a little time.
So really, it's, I have to make it almost impossible.
Mrs. Sonny, they did assure us at our upgrade meeting that every Rockaway Township School has a sign.
Well, I just want to make sure that there's a move in this budget through the preliminary work, along with our broken record, the Stony Brook parking lot, which isn't that shape, but that a year from now, we can get any preliminary work for that this year in this coming year's budget, so that a year from then, perhaps that can get fixed.
Well, a suggestion, and everybody can put in, we have, we have, we do budget for, eleven o'clock, when we do this new architect, we need that in here. Just start, because if we're going to try and do Stony Brook next summer, that money for the research and the work that needs to be...
That's why I'm bringing it up. So on twelve transfer, we have to work, we're going to be...
Correct, but with preliminary work.
Yes. And so that we probably have to be money in this area, so that we have it in our projects to have some time.
Right, the driveway and the garden rail, which is posted up. So that would be great.
Thank you. I think I had, to be, it was waiting for me, month twelve, you just mentioned, I guess we got a sheet on month twelve?
Yeah. I think in your budget books, there will be a separate tab on twelve, but if age eighteen has really, all we have right now is on twelve. So we have the money there for the, the most IT technology, access, the smart word, the site, so that kind of thing. Well, there's one thing I'd like to bring up, and we're going to have to do a little trimming to do that, is that Franklin's only, we use a loaner. And, you know, he's got like a, before, um... Percy Colorado, and it's going to be... Close to third, we have a lot. It's a, it's a Toro turf.
It's a riding mower, obviously.
What was the cause of ground master twenty-thirties or thirty thousand? Is this to replace what we already have?
Yes. So, I think, given this, after, this is the end of twenty-one, twenty-two. That was on his, which is not in this budget. And we will put in, and put the money, cancel it as well. Depending on whether or not we want to go ahead with this purchase, we have two things to shave down what's coming in here. We're close to our target number. Yep, we're going to shave, and then we need that, probably looking around. Yes. Move that in, in the target.
Well, given the discussions we had tonight, and I know that everything's having to get trimmed, to one, at least for you to us four doing that, so we can come back on the fourteen, if you can make it work.
Oh, I can make it work.
So, I, I should rephrase that. If you could make it work without hurting anything else?
I think there's enough opportunity in this budget, I can just shake a little bit, a little bit, while you're higher up when I first took, so twelve K. And I took five percent of something, I just, a little bit, while everyone's mind will affect you, you know, it's, it will get us to the number of the needed.
I remember the well, I actually, this whole, this whole place.
Right. And none of us are out there doing maintenance, so we have to trust, both of you to say, yes, we absolutely need this. I need to hear from you that it's absolutely needed.
I will, before I even turn it to the budget, I'll have a few questions concerning what exactly happened.
And why? And we have to trust a percent. Not wrong. Anything else?
I just have a question. Airbox, like you're, Brooklyn, why are your supplies going down by eighty-five percent?
What, before, before?
Super, under superintendent?
Uh, well, it's the supply superintendent on this. It's page, I'm, there's two pages ones. Second page one. So I, the second one up.
Down, what down to thousand dollars? Down to two thousand?
I didn't mention.
Yeah, I think that's more on where it is at, I don't know. Is there any, this could be a permanent purchase?
Uh, yes. No one's there, but they, we put money here, probably for the, we have stairs, but how that we don't find. Yeah. So if you see, if we go back the prior years, uh...
Well, you know, I was like, I think, that's a lot of ink.
People want you to wait out tape and the high first of year, and the post is that you don't need, so.
And then I had a question about, I was in the transportation. So it'd be, under the business office, remember, I'm age four, the, the busing? Now, if you remember, we had gone to the New Jersey School Board Workshop, and you were exploring, whatever that was, buses?
Yeah, so, nothing good. They, they are not going to get any of the money to operate buses, they are, they now shifted into electric buses. So I was notified by Harvard just last week that they're not going to be able to ready to bring buses on site. However, didn't Joan say that, that one of the companies that was involved in the parade had gasoline or...
Okay, yes, they will, they will need to get a grant line, you know, so, causes to us, which is made, what they call, to the, to the, to the buses.
But the group, that group that we were working with, the transportation, notified me that all money they were hoping for, for the buses, had to ship. So what, what we put in were, is not important.
So could we possibly move towards electric and get like greens, sustainability grants?
Maybe, I haven't done any research, I mean, so like the buses, how, how they were, or kind of what experience has been.
Can you park them at the Tesla club?
To take the water.
I know it's in here somewhere, but I couldn't find it, so I'm glad it's here, because it's out there. So the four bus cameras, they're in here, so we're definitely getting, in here for this budget next year, are four bus cameras?
This year.
Oh, this year, so what, are you budgeting for next year?
The new buses come with them next year, right? They're, they're, they're a bit more than the specs.
Yeah, so this is, this is what I had, cameras, cameras taking. Two new buses that we took to Lurie, which was, I did not fill in this day, had some of the, the...
Really?
So Joan had called me yesterday, I was mainly going to ask, is that doing, two new buses, who's doing, second to this process, which was one that was at the door of us the day we did the process. So those two buses are getting...
So this, so for this, in this budget here, are current, like, we have two?
So this is our transportation department, that's money for us. I budget ahead of time, four hundred thousand dollars. Put it in our revenue, so we know that's made when we get. Well, now we have twenty-three thousand dollars. So the way things are going, I'm tying on that to happening in next year. And once that, we go over a hundred thousand dollars, our revenue will be spread pretty, push for money to our budget as we move on.
So there's nothing in the, there's nothing in the two thousand nineteen, twenty budget right now?
Right now.
That's for bus cameras. The revenue, the accessory revenue.
First hundred thousand, and I start with one hundred, just by doing this year, for first.
But the new, the new, what Joan said is the new vehicles will come with the cameras next year. The four new vehicles, right. So this year, we got to get cameras for the buses, but those buses are...
So it's a camera, well, six. We'll have six, and then pass it with more, once we're over a hundred thousand on revenue. And can I really do two right now?
Two this year, and then new buses that come next year, Joan said will happen this year.
So then, two new buses that we just got this year, will be up with the cameras, and will be extra.
Yeah, so we might even have to work with, let's just say, well, next.
We will, I mean, she uses, she needs that money for those parts, and she's doing repairs to the, to the buses. So she needs to lay out the money for the parts, she needs to keep it in the toilet parts, and she, she uses that money to, so now it's, it's there on the, on the cameras, and, 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 and she needs, and it's, 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 it's. Okay, we'll take that to the, to the, aside.
Thank you. Careful, hold it, one, eight, just, watch my next.
Well, before we adjourn, you can adjourn, yeah, because we need to go back into executive session for a personal, private issue, and we will be coming out to close, but no actual review, so. May I have a motion, please, to go back into executive? So moved. Thanks, Smith, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.